Meeting to order, will be been at the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to welcome everybody here and we'll have the roll call.
Commissioner Schlungen. Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Pop.
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Here.
Commissioner Heinen.
Here.
Approve or amend the agenda?
Just one item for county board, Mr. Chair is under Commissioner Concerns eight forty, I'm sorry, nine forty-five. Commissioner Pop wishes to add discussion of a Mississippi River Watershed Board appointment. Mississippi River Watershed Board appointment. And the other item is for Human Services Board.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Go ahead.
Motion's been made in second to approve the agenda, items number one through six, with the amended one under Commissioner Concerns. Anybody want any of these pulled for further discussion? Hearing none at all. Do we need to do the roll then, or not? No?
Do we gotta do roll and all that? Oh, I'm sorry.
You know, I think, Mr. Chair, since our absent board member is not with us virtually, a roll call vote is not necessary.
Okay, thank you. So, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Roxanne? For the Department of Development, a public hearing?
Consent.
For the Pearls Edition in Watatab Township.
I think we need to do the consent.
Mr. Chair.
Public forum?
Oh, yes, we forgot about public forum. Is there anybody on the list back there? No, there is no public forum today then. So then we'll move to Roxanne.
What about the consent?
Consent.
We did. Oh, no.
We weren't supposed to do that.
Yeah, I asked for the consent agenda.
Let's back up then into the consent agenda.
Okay. So the consent agenda on items one through six plus they added one under Commissioner Concerns, does anybody wish to have any of them pulled for further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Could I pull number five just for a question?
Certainly. So number five is being pulled. So I'll look for a motion for one through four and six in the added agenda item.
Motion to approve one through four and number six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, number six is?
Number five.
Or number five is to the project on County Road Three, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Chris, I see this dates back to like two thousand and nineteen, and I was just kind of wondering if I get a little clarification on, you know, that's almost two years and.
Yeah, so this was, this was on Casatu, this was our project at Little Rock Lake, where we timed our project with the Little Rock Lake drawdown. So we didn't even start the project in August of two thousand and nineteen, so the end of nineteen. And it carried over into two thousand and twenty with the final seeding and everything. And so, part of it is, we had this change order, there's a thirty thousand dollar change order. Part of it, the delay is due to negotiation between us and the contractor. And I think we just got busy this past year in two thousand and twenty and just didn't get this finalized out. And we got a final agreement with the contractor late in two thousand and twenty. So by the time we got final signatures, we always request the contractor sign off on this final payment. Because once we have their signature, it's kind of like they're saying, yep, we agree with all these quantities and what you're going to pay us. And then I bring it to the next available board meeting at that time. So yeah, it was a combination of things that led to this. It's not ideal for us, and maybe I'll touch on this quickly. This was a state aid funded project, meaning we're using our state aid allotment. And I want to give a presentation in the future about this, but how state aid payments work? We can request up to ninety-five percent of the project cost as soon as we award a construction contract. We don't get that last five percent until we complete all this process. So I think there's a conception that we're holding on to the contractor's money and earning interest on it. When in reality, we haven't even got our last five percent of this because we haven't completed all the paperwork yet. So it's a financial benefit to us to kind of push these through as quickly as we can so we can get our last bit of payment, so.
Okay. Yeah, I was just a little concerned because you start pushing, I've been a contractor before and usually that five percent, there's a lot of people that actually just say, ah, I'm not even going to try and collect it because it's a lot to try and come through with. But two years just seems like it was a longer time.
Yeah, this is a relatively small project, not very many subs. Our larger projects where there's a lot of subcontractors, we would be hearing about it long before this, so.
Yeah, and that with all the stuff we got coming up, that was one of my concerns, so looks like you're on top of it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Chris, could I ask you one more question? The percent over on this, was that pretty typical on a project that size?
Yeah, most of this overrun comes into, as you can imagine, right there by the lake. We had a lot of muck excavations, we call it, some really poor soils underneath the pavement that we ended up instructing the contractor to excavate additional from what was in the plan, so.
So their soil borings didn't show that when they?
Yeah, it's interesting, soil borings, you can't take a continuous soil boring around, we have soil borings. And it's one of those things, in between soil borings, you have like a dip or something like that, and it just, sometimes it just gets missed, so.
Yep, anybody do it right, I understand.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and it did turn out really nice, so.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
So you want to move to approve?
I'll move to approve Consent Agenda Item Number Five.
Second.
Motion's been made in second for Consent Agenda Number Five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Carried.
Now we will get to Roxanne.
Okay, wanted to get this pulled up first. All right, before you, we have the plat of Pearls Edition, and it's Janu Properties that is working on this plat. I believe this is shared, right? Okay. This is a plat in Watatab Township. It is approximately fourteen point six two acres that's being platted. We did rezone this back in, I believe it was November, December timeline. And then they moved forward with the minor subdivision of this property. It does have an existing home on it here on Lot One. And then each of the additional five lots, so six total, all are above two acres, which is much, much more than the required one acre in the R-two zoning district. It does back up against the railroad and due to the plating requirements, we did reach out to the railroad, asked them if they had any concerns. Their concerns were just that people could cross the railroad if there was not a barrier put up. But we did find out that in-state statute, it is the responsibility of the railroad to install any sort of barriers that they would like in place along there. Once I mentioned that to them, I didn't hear back from them. So, that being said, this is one of those projects that would go through Watatab subdivision process. And it did do that and receive preliminary and final plat approval through Watatab. We do have one, I've only received one comment on this.
We'll get that to a public hearing?
Sure, sure. Other than that, I think this is a great project to go in Watatab, add some additional lots. The access is from two separate township roads.
Okay, so then we'll go, the next item on our agenda is a public hearing to consider the mere final plat entitled Pearls Editions in Watatab Township submitted by Janu Properties LLC Sandra Saldana. Before opening the public hearing, we'll first hear from the county staff report, which we kind of did already. If the applicant is present or their representative is here, please come to the podium, give us your name, address, and tell us what you are seeking.
Good morning, I'm Sandra Saldana, PO Box two seven six Sauk Rapids. And Roxanne's correct, I was here, I believe it was October and we had it rezoned. I've worked with Watatab, pretty familiar with the process, but, you know, just going from, like I said, it was fourteen point six two acres. At one point, it was farmland, but right across the road is residential. So I think it's a very good fit on the comp plan from the county. If you look at your new comp plan, it will show that as being residential or zoned residential or possible residential. So I think it's a good fit being on the Economic Development Board. I feel that that's great for our county and for our township. We are definitely, you know, in need of some residential and as people move out of the St. Cloud area, I just think it's a really good fit. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Oh, actually, this will be a question for later on.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the county board on this agenda? If so, please come to the podium and give your name and address. Seeing no one?
Do we have anyone, Roxanne via go-to that, I saw one name up there, I didn't recognize, Jason? That's for another matter?
Could be.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jason is here for?
Right.
Okay, then I don't see anyone on there for it.
Okay, yep, thanks.
I'll just add that we received an email from Gloria Nelson. And she lives on the east side of Highway Ten, north of, and to the north from this picture here. She has concerns about the noise and who, letting the property owners know who they need to contact with noise concerns, nuisance concerns, agricultural smells. I, I'm not sure where this is coming from.
Mr. Chair, if I could maybe comment from the Planning Commission perspective? I believe we had pretty good consensus that this is some responsibility that people are going to be potentially buying these lots. I don't know that it's really anybody else's responsibility at this point. And Planning Commission voted unanimous to move this ahead to the county board, obviously, so we're good.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Scott, what do you think about the, I know Gloria brought up a question about a fence and stuff. And I know the railroad is supposed to take care of that, but we probably know that they're not going to? Just a thought.
I think, again, we would go back to the, correct me if I'm wrong, but it would be the property owner's responsibility to proceed. I don't know how they come to the county, and they may come to the county and complain about it, but I don't know that the county is going to step up and take care of that. They've got to see that when they're.
No, it would definitely be the property owner, but could you put anything like that in, in this ordinance that we approve?
I, based on the response from our county attorney when the railroad requested it, I would say no.
Okay, okay, all right, that's all I had.
Mr. Chair, and that would be the responsibility of everyone that bought those lots would be to petition together to the railroad to get a fence up if they decided.
And this seems to work opposite, so if the homes were in place and the railroad went through, we would require the railroad being that more intense use to put that up. It doesn't, it usually doesn't work in the scenario where a lesser intense use puts up.
Mr. Chair, my concern is more coming from me being on a fire department, which takes care of that area, and with little kids. That was, that was the only reason I brought it up.
So, final call for anyone wishing to address the county board. Final call for public testimony, seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Is there any emails, letters, or communications to be read for the record?
Nope, just the one from Gloria Nelson, which I provided you and is already in the record.
Has the department received any comments, concerns from state agencies, cities, or townships on this agenda?
Watatab Township did approve the preliminary and final plat, and then the railroad had mentioned installing some sort of fencing or barrier.
Okay, and if official action was required by the affected township, was there any action?
Yes, Watatab took action on it and approved it.
Okay. The county board will now have time for questions of the staff and discussions. As a reminder to the audience, the public hearing is not, portion is now closed. Are there any questions or comments from board members before we take action on this agenda item?
Commissioner Pop, I see also Commissioner Schlungen has now joined us via go-to.
Okay.
So Commissioner Schlungen, you might want to unmute your microphone for us. Thank you very much. Thank you.
So is there any comments? Okay.
I'll move approval of the final plat entitled Pearls Edition?
Second.
We're back to roll call votes now.
Yep, motion's been made in second to approve the plat for Jan Air and Pearls Edition. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Commissioner Schlungen?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
I'll abstain because I have an interest here.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinen?
Aye.
So it passes on a four, zero, with one abstention. Thank you.
Good luck, Sandy, thank you.
Yeah. Then we'll move to Chris Byrd.
Are you doing anything visual?
I was going to, yes. Yes. Can we do share screen? That way Commissioner Schlungen can see what you're doing. Okay, you're familiar with how to do share screen. Okay, good deal, thanks.
All right, allow me one moment here.
Roxanne's really good at that. She uses a lot of planning commission.
So, okay, should be shared now?
Yes, sir.
All right, good morning, Commissioners. The first item I wanted to talk to you today is about a trail project along R-Casaw One. And this is a project that our staff has been talking with the city of Sauk Rapids for over a year, maybe almost two years, with the previous city engineer. And there's been a desire for some time now to get better trail access to the high school, which is over here on Osaka Road. And you may recall, you know, a number of years ago, we reconstructed Golden Spike Road, and there's a ten-foot trail along the north side of Golden Spike Road. But today, that trail ends. And so, it was decided that probably the best place to put this trail this time is on the east side of the road. Those wanting to walk or bicycle to the high school can use the trail on Golden Spike Road. Use the pedestrian crossings that have already been constructed at this roundabout at Mayhew Lake Road and Golden Spike Road. And then stay on the east side of the road all the way up to the high school. And the reason for this was that now we don't have another crossing that needs to be constructed here at Osaka Road. We, from an engineering standpoint, we believe that for pedestrian safety, use the crossing at the roundabout, trail on the east side, and then you're kind of on high school property at that point. So the reason I bring this up to you today, because part of this is going to be constructed in R-Casaw One, which is Mayhew Lake Road right-of-way. This is a city-led project. The city applied for a Transportation Alternatives grant, and they were successful in getting that grant. They provided all the engineering for it, and anything that the grant doesn't cover, they will be funding. So, this is the south end of the project, where south is on the left, north is to the right. And then so right here is basically, it's not shown here, but this is where the roundabout is, Golden Spike Road. So here's a big chunk of the trail where it ties into the existing sidewalk and pedestrian crossings that will be constructed in County Road right-of-way. So what we've decided to do as a staff, staff level, is to require the city to apply for a utility permit. Since this is a city-led project, it's, in our mind, it's very similar to if there was a city utility, city water or sewer, and they need to be under our road or within our road right-of-way, we would issue them a permit. And that permit kind of says, you know what, this is your project, this is your asset, but we will allow you to be in our county road right-of-way. And then therefore, we can spell out some conditions and provisions in that permit. So that's what we're planning on doing right now, is issuing them a permit to construct this trail within our right-of-way. This, they did request, let's see if we can show that, the county engineer to sign off on the plans. That's pretty typical for projects like this. And that's just saying, we did review it and we, we think it's good engineering that designed the trail. It meets, if it's constructed to the plan, it would meet all any ADA requirements at the crossings and things like that. So, once again, by me signing it though, doesn't say that we're agreeing to paying for it or maintaining it. Those kind of things will be spelled out in that utility permit. Another benefit, I would say, to having a permit, as a road authority, those entities are there by permit. If for something happens in the future, we do have a right to revoke permits on utilities. So, I just thought that that might be a good route to go down with this project, since we really don't have any engineering or contractual obligations to build this, this trail. So that's, what I understand is that, yeah, this would be this summer construction. Once we get the plan signed, they're going to send them in for approval from the state and as soon as they can, be advertising for a bid opening and constructed this summer.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I can tell you from my previous position, we looked at this right away when Casaw Three was done and kind of wondered why we didn't get on board right away, you know, to do that trail, being it ended there at Golden Spike Road. So, the city of Sauk Rapids actually has been looking at this for a very long time. The only question back then was how do we create a trail to go across, is that number one? To further up, Chris, right to?
There at the Osaka Drive, correct.
They were trying to figure out how to cross that road, you know, and that's going to be a dilemma.
Yeah, that's not been vetted out yet. Yeah, as you can see, that's obviously a neighborhood that may be fully developed at this point now.
And there is a trail, just to fill you guys in, there's a trail system that goes from Osaka all the way around to every development, all the way up to Highway Ten, because I was not part of that. You know, so this is just another piece of the puzzle to connect all the trails together.
So, Chris, you said it's going to be on the east side of the road?
Correct.
So it'll be on the high school side?
Correct, yep.
You're talking about how it gets across to that development?
Correct, to the west side of that development at the end.
Yeah, we talked about that, us and the city engineer, like I said, over a year ago. And I think we ultimately decided that, well, we do have pedestrian crossings that are already constructed today at that roundabout. Let's utilize what we already have. And now with Golden Spike and the Three Up The Hill project constructed, there's a trail all the way down to downtown Sauk Rapids now. So, you look at the numbers, the greater potential for usage is probably going to come from that direction. So let's utilize what's already out there today as part of the infrastructure. And I think we know that that's an issue that's going to have to be addressed sometime in the future.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Chris, on that, we're already at forty miles an hour going by the school during school zone. What happens if we just change that to forty all, at all times? That way it allows people, you know, people are going a little slower to be able to get across.
Good question. That revolves a process that would have the state transportation engineer do a traffic engineering speed study on that. And I don't foresee that study coming back recommending that all time, just because school's not active all, all time. Those signs, we installed those as a partnership with the school district a number of years ago. And we've given them full control to change those times for when it best suits their starting and ending times, even if they have activities at night that they got a lot of traffic coming in. Current laws allow road authorities to set school zones and speed limits with some discretion, with actually quite a bit of discretion. But changing the speed limit permanently would require a traffic engineering study.
Mr. Chair, I think that's something that in the future we'll have to look at when, if and when twenty-nine gets developed. Then I think that'd be the time to pursue the speed limit.
Yep. So, when I look at this, they're going to have to cross by the roundabout.
Yep.
Is there potential that we would need to install, like, you know, you see those flashing pedestrian lights there or something? Because, you know, the traffic in the roundabout flows pretty regularly. And you need to maybe warn people that there's pedestrians there?
So, yes, in the past, we did discuss that. And that was the option, one of the options that, you know, I'm not speaking for Sauk Rapids, but that was one of the main concerns. And they did talk about that. And that would be put on them, correct, Chris?
I think so at this point. If it's, yeah, I wouldn't want to do anything that isn't warranted, and that's an engineering term, meaning that we've got good engineering justification to install those kinds of things. There is a benefit to a roundabout with those splitter islands, it calls, it creates a refuge, as we call it. So, a pedestrian only needs to be focused on one direction of traffic, then you get to that refuge, you can stop and then wait for a clearing in the other. And it may come up in the future. I think right now, we don't have the volumes pedestrian or vehicles. But within twenty years, we may get there where we need to look at that again, so.
One other question I guess I'd have is that from, for the two Sauk Rapids Commissioners, is there a lot of, like, when the weather's nice, is there a lot of pedestrian traffic going to and from school?
There's a lot.
Is there?
Yeah.
Because that would be my biggest concern, is that, you know, you have a lot of pedestrian traffic during school hours. And that's where I think, you know, I would really, really think pedestrian lights would be good.
I know on County Road One before, you know, the MTH Two, the roundabout, is filled all the time with joggers and bicyclers and you name it going along there.
So I guess we maybe should have the conversation with the city that, I mean, I don't want to see the county be liable or anything else, you know, if it would warrant flashes for pedestrians there.
Mr. Chair, I would have to agree with you. I do know the city is aware of that.
Okay.
And that would also fall on their responsibility for that signage, I believe.
Yeah, I think that's something that we would look to them to take care of. They maintain the trail now. And they are plowing it in the wintertime. And that's just kind of, I guess, indicative of the usage. They get enough usage in the wintertime, they do plow that, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Changed gears a little bit. Chris, what's the cost of the utility easement for the city? And is it just one permit?
Yeah, so we were just going to make them get one permit. It's a nominal fee, a hundred dollar fee for them to complete the permit. But we spell out insurance requirements and all those kinds of things, so we will have those in that permit. So if there is any issues, we do have some assurances there that we could go back on.
So when you talk utility easements, is there just one standard utility easement? Like, for instance, if you need to pump manure through a culvert out in the country and you got to put a culvert in, is it, it used to be a twenty-five dollar utility easement?
Oh, yeah, so, let me go back up. So we were granting a permit and not necessarily giving them an easement. Usually an easement indicates that they would have the sole right to be in a certain space, and we're not saying that so far.
Just a utility permit?
Just a permit, allowing them to do work in our right-of-way.
Okay.
So theoretically, say, Charter Communications needs to drop a new cable line, we would grant them a permit and they could be underneath that sidewalk. So Sauk Rapids doesn't have the sole right to occupy that space. Another utility could occupy the space under it, because we're trying to manage that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I do believe this is a good thing for the, for the city and the county.
Yeah, I agree.
So, yeah, I brought it, it's just an informational item, but if you had any objections, I'd like to hear them now. Other than that, we will continue with the utility permit and signing the plans and letting the city get to work on this project. and letting the city get to work on this project.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Chris, uh, what I would do is get in con- conversations with the City of Sock Rapids and their engineer about signage and all that.
Yeah.
I know they are all aware of it, because we were all talking about it when I was on the council. Just to, for clarification, you know, that'd be on their end to, uh, take care of that.
I, I'm just spitballing here, but I'm thinking like a media campaign and stuff, once it's constructed, just getting it out there in the media, just making people aware as much as possible that there may be increased pedestrians now, so. I will certainly do that.
Okay.
All right, well, then, if, uh, so Desire, we'll move on to the next item I had. Oh, so I wanted to talk about, uh, our summer road construction program. And I have to apologize, the map that was attached in the agenda left off a segment of road. So, well, this is all gonna be one project, but what we're planning this summer is a mill and overlay of our County Road forty-six, uh, from Highway ten all the way to Highway twenty-three, past Summerland, to give you some reference points. This County Road eighty-eight and eighty-nine, uh, known as Quebecore Road, and, and this County Road ninety that we had previously talked about, that we're still waiting for that agreement back from the City of Saint Cloud. Uh, these are going to be, um, mill and overlay projects, although we will plan on paving a shoulder along, uh, eighty-eight. There's a gravel shoulder today. We are starting to see a lot more, uh, industrial traffic, truck traffic. You were noticing there's, they're pa- they're parking on the gravel shoulder. We think it's a good idea now, since we're gonna be overlaying the driving surface to go ahead and pave, uh, the shoulders there. These are separate road projects, but our plan is to tie them together, as we call it, and let them under one contract. That, that has a lot of benefits to us, as, um, we may see lower unit prices, cause now the quantities are going up. That usually results in lower unit prices. And by adding quantity or having more quantity, say, for batuminous surfacing, it tends to attract more bidders, which helps drive down that unit price as well. So this is a, oh, and the other thing I'll add is, um, that these are sales tax projects as well. So these are being paid for from our sales tax collection. During construction or shortly thereafter, I do, would like to put up some signs to kinda, kinda saying that, you know, kinda off all the side, saying that, you know, the, these roads were paid for by local sales tax, and maybe shop local or some, some kinda saying like that, because, um, I think it's important that the public starts seeing some of our roads that are benefiting from that, that sales tax for transportation. So pretty simple, straightforward projects shouldn't have, should have minimal disruptions of traffic. Obviously, we'll have flaggers and things happening while we're milling and, and paving that, but, uh, short timeframes, uh, overall on those projects. They should be constructed this summer and, and completed this, this summer as well.
Mr. Chair, just for information for the new commissioners, we did talk about this in the last couple of years of actually combining a lot of small projects together.
Makes sense, makes sense, yeah.
So, yeah, once again, I just wanted to bring that forward for information, not asking for formal action, but certainly if there's any concerns, we'd like to address those before we start advertising. So right now, uh, we plan on having a bid opening for these projects Friday, March sixth. So, and that's, that timeframe gets, is that long due to statutory requirements? We have to have them advertised, uh, for a certain amount of time. And that would put us, the earliest we could have it at this point would be Friday, March sixth for a bid opening.
Mr. Chair, uh, Chris, if we could back up to the Sock Rapids project, did they have an idea of when they wanted to start constructing all of this?
I do not know for certain, um, this summer is the best I could say. So right now, um, since they did get federal money for that project, it's gotta go to the state for final plan approval. So that's the timeframe that's kinda unknown right now. So, if my signature was the last one that needed to be on it, I would think that they would be ready to construct it as soon as, uh, spring thaw happens. But that unknown timeframe of having the state review it and approve the plans is we're, um, kinda pushing things out, so. We do know, I mean, honestly, we'll probably benefit them too. We have a lot of asphalt paving or batuminous paving in the area. They may be the beneficiary of some good unit prices, since there's a contractor in the area, already got a plant set up and, and things like that, so. Just being neighborly with them.
That'd be good if you could coordinate that with the city, save, you know, both parties some money, maybe.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I agree, and I'll be setting up a meeting anyway with the City of Sock Rapids, talk about this and
Well, I wanna caution, I don't wanna tie their project to ours.
No, no.
Uh, because they have federal, they have a lot of federal requirements that they're having to go under that we wouldn't have to on our project. If we did tie them
Yeah.
Then, then we would be subject to federal oversight, and that's not something we're interested in doing right now.
No.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Could we go back to that, uh, roadmap really quick?
Yes.
The blue part, is that gonna be taken care of as well?
Yes, correct, yeah. So that's the, oh, I duplicated. That was the change from, what was it, in your agenda packet to today? So, yeah, forty-six, this is our county road currently, all the way from Highway ten, that bridge over Highway ten to twenty-three, so. There are some, uh, pedestrian crossings here, eh, and that's, that's something additional to the mill and overlay. Our current ADA policy says that when we do mill and overlays, we will look at, uh, pedestrian crossings, and if they're not to standards, we'll bring those up. So we will be doing some small sidewalk construction to make sure that those ramps and everything are at today's standards.
Now, you, you had said it'll take the summer, is it like a two-month, three-month, or the, the entire summer?
Uh, we will put, like, probably a tight working days on there. Theoretically, mill and overlay, I mean, a couple of weeks to do that, that many tonnage. Uh, the concrete work probably take a little bit longer, so. This is one that would be beneficial to us to complete it and do all the final paperwork and bringing to you that final payment before the end of the calendar year, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Chris, just for clarification, on your estimated cost, eight-hundred-and-ten-thousand-three-twenty-three, source of funds, sales tax, withage tax, City of Saint Cloud, the eight-ten, that's the county estimated cost? Or is that the total of, I mean, City of Saint Cloud's in here too?
Good, that's the total of all those projects. So, yeah, the little, the portion of City Saint Cloud is in that eight-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars and stuff, so.
Yep, thank you.
All right, very good, I think that's all I had, yeah. Unless there's any other questions, I'll step aside.
Chris, have you got any more updates on the sales tax that we dropped off, or?
You know what, I haven't seen it, uh, for a month, but actually, this week, we should be getting the next month's estimate, so maybe before the end of the week, I can share a memo or something of what we've collected for January, so, yeah. It'd be interesting to see.
Yeah.
Cause theoretically now, we would start seeing holiday shopping collections too. So it'd be interesting to see where we're at compared to the previous year.
Correct. Okay, any other questions for Chris? Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
We're good on time, I'll recess the regular board meeting and turn it over to Commissioner Heinem for Human Services.
We'll call it, or the Human Services Board meeting, uh, at this time, is there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there's one addition. That would be a stipend for volunteer nurses.
Okay, and that'd be under regular agenda then, correct?
Yes.
Any other changes?
No.
Monty?
You're out of it.
I'm just the techie guy.
You're just a tech guy walking around? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ag- agenda with the noted changes?
I'll approve, or I'll motion.
Second.
Okay, you got a motion and a second, uh, we'll do a roll call.
Commissioner Schlongen?
Take off a mute.
Commissioner, Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem?
Aye.
Under consent, we only have one item. Anyone like to pull that one? Entertain a motion?
I'll move, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Second.
You got a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Schlongen?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem?
Aye.
Okay, under regular agenda? Go ahead, Bob.
All right, as you know, we are in the midst of quite a few, uh, clinics and, and vaccines and so forth, and, uh, since we have three public health nurses that are able to give vaccines, that leaves us with, uh, not a lot of cap- capacity, so we do co- have a contract with Minnesota Responds, and we are able to use their resources to be able to help us with our clinics. However, what ends up happening is we compete for those services with other counties. And right now, there's about six nurses that are in this, uh, group of people, and we have about three of them that are working in other counties, and that leaves with two, two to three that we are able to, if they are not busy, ask them to help us. One of the things that we can do is through our local hu- public health grant, use those dollars to pay a stipend for these nurses. And one of the things that will, that will provide us is hopefully, they'll see that Benton County is being proactive to try and, uh, bring these nurses to our county to help us, because i- if, when you start talking about, uh, what's gonna come on pretty soon here with, uh, forty thousand residents, we're gonna get, uh, quite a few vaccines, and we just don't have the capacity to do it. So, we're hoping that this will lure some of those nurses to, uh, think about Benton County as being a place where they can administer these vaccines. So I would ask for your approval to, uh, use our existing public health grant funds to pay for stipends.
Bob, are the other counties giving stipends out too?
Not many of them.
That you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of. I, I assume that this is gonna be something when, we haven't gotten very many vaccines, but when they start really coming out, we're gonna be competing, so we're just kinda ahead of the curve, I think. I, I expect that, certainly once Benton County, uh, uses, or excuse me, approves this, then at that point in time, others may follow suit, but we're just kinda a step ahead, I think.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the stipend for volunteer nurses.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, any more discussion?
So, can we maybe, if we got two or three out there, can we maybe tie them down? Like, so they can't jump from county to county?
Well, nothing is off the table.
Just a thought.
Well, that's exactly why we're doing this, is we're trying to monetarily tie them down, if you will, because, uh, I, I, I know when, when you start talking about working for Centra Care or working for Stearns County and their big machine, it's probably desirable to get in there and show your wares to those places. And I think, you know, that's why we're looking at money to try and lure them this direction.
I think it's a great outside-the-box view to, yeah.
So, so Bob, you said this is paid through our grant system, what happens if we go above the dollar amount of our grant system?
We are woefully underspent on our grants right now because of the, the cares funds, plus w- when we devoted our, our services to the cares funds, that left our local public health grant w- well underfunded, and every single year, we underfund, or excuse me, what, we underuse th- those funds, just because we don't have, uh, great capacity here.
Okay, so we do have enough resources to pay for all of this, if it goes above it?
Yes. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, Bob, just walk me briefly through the accountability of this. The nurses turn in their time to who and who's monitoring it and who's passing it on to be paid?
Sam, I see that you're on, would you like to pop on for a minute, talk?
Sure.
Hi, Sam.
So, we, hi. So we, our plan was to pay them a set amount per clinic, and it wouldn't be an hour-for-hour basis. So we were thinking a sixty-dollar stipend per clinic, and, um, we were thinking a monthly invoice. We would send them an invoice template, and then they would send that back to, um, Public Health, and we would turn those in, um, all together to our fiscal unit.
Perfect, that answered, thank, thank you, Sam.
Mr. Chair? How many hours do they work for that, uh, sixty dollars?
Our clinics are about four hours long, as of right now, but that's all tentative to change. It all kind of depends on the vaccine allocation that we receive each week, and we really don't know, week to week, how much we're going to be getting.
Bob, hypothetically, could this stipend go up if we needed to, to try and, as you will, tie down?
Yes, I, I didn't wanna necessarily say that to scare you off.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a situation that if Sherburne County or Stearns County or whoever comes up with a hundred-dollar stipend, it, this could be a, a, a bidding war here, but hopefully, you know, the nice thing about it is, is that if we can get these people, a, a lot of people aren't taking the vi- uh, the vaccine right now, so we're, we're kinda faced with, we just gotta move with the cheese, I guess, is the way, best way to, to put it, and, and right now, we're ahead of the curve, so maybe we get them in here and it'll be, yeah, the pot'll be bigger over there, but we have already invested first, so maybe that will draw them to us and keep them to us, so.
I do think this is a good start in the right direction.
Absolutely. And evidently, we're open to increasing the stipend for that, so I think that's a good thing.
Time will tell, I think.
One, one side note here is that Sam has asked the rest of Human Services to really start trying to find some ways to, uh, help with these clinics, because they're being overwhelmed, so I think that not only are we approaching it from the, the nurse perspective, but we're also trying to find resources, so I think that that's something that we may ask countywide if there's, uh, if we can't, cause I know that Human Services, we're, we always seem to be pretty busy, but I, I think that it's a situation where we may ask outside of, uh, public health and outside of Human Services at some point, if it really gets to be a lot, so.
Mr. Chair, this is actually gonna come up in my, uh, committee, uh, report, so there's, there's a major problem here, and that's why I asked if we could increase that, because this is gonna be statewide, probably nationally, so, of a, of a shortage, so.
Yes, that's, I, I, kudos to Sam and her group for, uh, bringing this up before others have thought about it, or they probably thought about it, but we tried to jam it into this board meeting so we can get ahead of the curve.
Thank you, good job.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schlongen?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem?
Aye.
Bob, you have anything else for us?
No, I don't think so, unless you have any questions for me.
Okay, at this time, we'll, uh, reconvene and turn it back over to the chair of the regular board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Bob. At this time, we'll re- recess the regular board meeting to conduct a ditch authority meeting. Ready?
Yeah.
I'll call the meeting to order, approve or amend the agenda.
I have nothing to add.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to, um, accept the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda, any other discussion? Roll call, Vicki.
Commissioner Schlongen?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Mr. Kapinski?
Aye.
Mr. Heinem?
Aye.
Well, the agenda's been approved, um, approve or amend the amendments of January nineteenth?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion's been made and s- and seconded to approve the minutes, any other discussion? Roll call, Vicki.
Mr. Schlongen?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Professional service contract to complete the redetermination of benefits.
All right, so, w- before you today is the, the contract, um, again, we had these at All right, so before you today is the contract, again, we had these at the last meeting, but there were some questions. And I do see that Brian Murphy, the, one of the viewers that was appointed and the one that signed this contract is on the call today. So he can answer them better than I could. One of the questions we received last time was the, around the hourly fee clause in there. So we have a set fee of four dollars per benefited acre to do all that. And so maybe before I speak for him, if Brian, if it's okay with the board, I'll have Brian kind of answer when that hourly fee would kind of come into play, if it ever does. So Brian, are you there?
Yes, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yes, thanks, Chris. I just wanted to point out that we have only in a history of hundreds of contracts, charged our hourly rate one time. And I guess if I can, the reason why we have that in there is because our position is to deliver data and to deliver numbers and to deliver factual results. And unfortunately, as you all know, sometimes some of these things get tied up a little bit more in political issues. And that's the only time we've ever charged that hourly rate. So an example I can think of is there was a landowner that we visited, a site visit, at least a half a dozen times. We thought that we had everything rectified with him and explained to him. And he showed up at the hearing and kind of voiced the same concerns that we had already answered again. And one of the board members directed us to go back out there and revisit his site and kind of go over all the things we've gone over again. And that's the only time I can think of that we've charged an hourly rate. And even at that time, it was five hundred dollars is what we charged. Otherwise, if it's an error in the report, something we've overlooked, something that simply needs to be addressed, we just do that within the hour, within the acre rate. We want that per acre rate to be the only thing we charge for because we want a reputation of being a company that works for what we say we're going to. So you may know that other viewers in the state, the industry standard is to charge by the hour throughout the entire project. We like to charge by the acre because it gives everybody an upfront cost. They know exactly what everything's going to cost, start to finish. I will add that we also include the landowner packet that we print, package, mail, and acquire the affidavit of mailing for, which is, you know, technically that is a requirement by the county, but we just want to shoulder as much of a burden of this project as we can off of your county staff. So that was the only concern that I knew of. And then, Chris, was there any other ones?
No, that was the big thing. And maybe you can, what I understand is that four dollar per acre gets us that landowner packet, a meeting with the landowners and present, and I think Brian or your staff will be present at the final hearing for the viewer's report. And then, then anything after that would be an hourly charge? Or is that a fair statement?
Well, I guess it is to some regard. So we definitely take this all the way through to the final hearing. So basically from start to finish. Oftentimes, and it depends on legal counsel, but oftentimes at the hearing, it is requested for the legal counsel to draft facts and findings, but they continue the hearing to the next regular board meeting. And if that's the case and we're required to be present for that too, there's absolutely no charge for that. That's, I guess, if you can think of a good thing that's come out of COVID is these virtual hearings. You know, for us to be able to attend these things this way and then get right back to work on the other projects we're working on really drives down the cost on any kind of travel for us. So we definitely appreciate that. But even if we're required to be there in person and if the state happens to be opened back up by that time, we will attend the final hearing and we will attend any continuation hearings that are required just to get this through the process. And once that has been approved by the board, then of course, there's the thirty day appeal period that we just wait out. Upon the thirty day appeal period, we deliver a document to the auditor that allows him or her to upload the numbers that we provide directly into the tax systems so that there's no keystroke error entries and so that it doesn't bog down the auditor's office to key all this information in for days on end.
Yeah, I'll add, that landowner's packet that he mentioned is huge. We, just for the hearing that we had in December, we sent out something like two hundred notices. And I anticipate three to four times many landowners after this process. So we're talking about thousands of sheets of paper that if the viewers are going to take care of it, I think that's huge for my staff. And a lot of times, that falls on the auditor treasurer's staff to do those. So I think that's a big benefit of having them do that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So Chris, if we do get a surcharge of an hourly rate, who does that fall on?
Well, really, it would be a cost to that system. So if, say, so like we have several ditches and let's say like ditch eleven, we get to the final hearing and somebody's just not agreeing. And then, then as a board, you direct the viewers to go back out there and look at it one more time, then those additional costs would go to ditch eleven. It wouldn't be spread to all the ditches. It would just be that ditch that that falls under.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? This is requiring a motion. Mr. Chair, I'll move for approval of the three separate service agreements between Benton County and H two O viewers as presented.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the redetermination of benefits with H two O. Any other discussion?
Just want to say thank you, Brian, for being with us today and explaining that, that helps.
You're so welcome. I'm really looking, spent a lot of time working with Chris to get to this point. So I'm really looking forward to working with you guys.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Otherwise, roll call, Vicki.
Commissioner Schlangen?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinen?
Aye.
Motion carried. Anything else, Chris?
That's all I have regarding ditches today.
Then I'll adjourn the ditch authority meeting and go back to the regular board meeting. Commissioner, meeting updates?
I can start.
Are these new ones? Thank you.
So I did have quite a few meetings, but I only did attend one of the other three meetings. One was Benton County Historical Society. They've got plans drafted to redo some work inside the Robinson House. And so now they're meeting with the architect, the billing inspector, and to see which direction they're going to move forward. They do have a set dollar amount of what they hope to spend, but we'll find out later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I was on meeting overload in the last few weeks. But we'll start with the Central Minnesota Emergency Management Board. Basically, voted in the chair, Jeff Jalinski and Steve Smith are the same again. There's a ton of public service webinars coming up. They're on the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month from nine to eleven. If anybody's interested, I can get more information for that. One of the things I really focus on is our committee, the Central Region Committee, it really drives the state on these topics. So our progress drives the rest of the areas. So we want to keep doing that. MICA Myers built a new commissioner overview online. And I think I'm one of the only new ones on that board. So it was mainly for me, so thank him. Let's see, the State Emergency Communications Board, ECN, Emergency Communication Board slash ECB, the emergency service boards, there are seven of them. They're building a committee to help strategic planning. There was a ton of open spots, so I was able to fill three to four of them, waiting on the fourth one. So I'll be hopefully meeting with the sheriff, Mr. Heck, later on today and see if he has anybody that can be on the police department or the sheriff's department side. The Central Minnesota EMS Management Board notes, same thing. We voted in the chair, Jeff Jalinski is the chair again, along with Christine Houston being the vice chair. Huge topic was the positive balance so far in that fund. And it appears to be, we'll be running at a deficit here shortly. And they have no idea how this board is going to continue on. So it's, that's a, they're sending out letters to all of us to get to all of our county commissioners, to send off to legislators, because it is a, it is a very serious board. And they've really helped a lot during the COVID. So that's drained a lot of their, a lot of the funds. They're actually talking about not having some meetings, so it's not taking up some of the minute costs so they can generate that or put that cost to good use. So that'll be in communication further.
Excuse me, where does funding come from?
The state right now. And it's, it's kind of a gray area. Seat belts is a big thing. And obviously, seat belts, they're not taking and pulling people over. There was a lot of people, State Patrol is one of them. And obviously, they were busy for the last, how many months down in the cities for multiple things? It just, that fund is really down, but that's where most of it comes from. Great question.
Thank you.
Basically, COVID is affecting all of these, all of these things that this board works with. I had actually brought up to the commissioners that this isn't, even though I'm new to this board, it's not new. I mean, fire departments, reserves, EMS, what Bob was talking about. These people just aren't volunteering anymore. It's, it's, it's a major shortage out there. Even to the point where police departments, multiple people are retiring early. And there's just not the applicants coming in. Basically, I brought up, I'm on a legislative committee for fire departments to this board. And one of the things that we live by or we talk about every meeting on that board is we are the third most volunteers for all of these areas in the country when it comes to states and we're the forty eighth least funded. It's an eye opener. And it just, a matter of fact, one of my, one of my colleagues from another department had twelve years on and he retired as of last night, just up and retired, said he had enough. And it, it, it's a major problem. So going through that, COVID, for the COVID, there was ambulance strike team built for transporting patients to facilities after our areas are filled up. The good news is, is they were able, we were able to take care of all local COVID patients and only two out of our central region got transported. So they have come out with helmets and high oxygen flow nasal that really cut down on the ventilators. They have found that the ventilators are really, I don't want to be a medical person giving advice here, but it sounds like they're not as good on patients when they get put on a ventilator. So these helmets and high flow nasals actually go from, go up to sixty liters. And they have found that when people come in and get put on sixty liters, they could be in really discomfort and then almost immediately, they're, they're feeling comfortable again instead of being ventilated. That's the main reason that the air, all the air ambulances haven't been transporting COVID because of the small capacity within those helicopters. Now they're using these helmets and they're able to transport all of the patients that they need to. So that was a good thing. As of Monday, January twenty fifth, there was sixty thousand doses per week to Minnesota. And it's starting to rise. Out of that, eight hundred and seventy one thousand doses promised to Minnesota, five hundred and thirty K or a thousand doses shipped to Minnesota. Hundred and fifty three thousand went to care facilities. Three hundred and fifty three thousand have been administered. Four point eight percent of Minnesota have had the first dose and one point two percent have had the second dose. So that covers that one. Obviously, we had two sessions for AMC new commissioners that we got a lot of information on. I believe there was an AMC annual meeting in there that we attended. The MICA annual meeting, that last ten minutes, my computer died on me. So I apologize for dropping off that one, but I want that to get done about six thirty or quarter to seven.
Yeah.
So one of the things that we brought up earlier is, you know, all of, some of these, as we call it, non-required meetings. And it really stuck with me over a couple of the, these AMC meetings. And we're talking many commissioners on it, like hundreds. Two of our commissioners were personally brought up. One retired, Mr. Berkeley, and then the other one was Mr. Pop. And out of all of, I mean, I can't, I don't know of too many other commissioners that were personally brought up in these meetings, but they were all for good things for what Spence has done in the past. And obviously, I'm sitting in a new chair here and what the AMC loses compared to what they're gaining with me, you know? It's a big deal. So.
It'll change.
Yeah, so.
Particularly, particularly you, were they?
No, they weren't, but it was, they really had kudos out to him. But Mr. Pop, you were brought up by the president about this new commissioner and you really wanted to be a part of this committee that taught new commissioners how to go through personal life, manage their work and the county efforts. So I thought it was really cool and we should take these committees pretty seriously. That's all I have.
Are you really going to ask me to follow up that? I felt like I was home with my feet up, having talked. I can only double the AMC and the MICA things. Of course, I was in attendance there, so I'm not going to continue to go on with that. The BEP annual meeting, I'm sure Amanda sent out the information on that. That was very good to attend. I'm glad I was able to make it on that one. Beth and I will be starting TRICAP here before long. I see the applications now came out. We've returned those in. Laurie Schultz, I believe it was, from TRICAP will be contacting us in regards to upcoming meetings. Also, the extension committee that'll be on, that'll be firing up here. I believe our first meeting of the year is February eighth, so we'll be moving forward with that. So that's all I have. I don't want to follow up Jared again. Sorry, that's what I have. Thank you.
Now you know why I go first.
Thank you.
Yeah, we had, we had, you all were there for the BEP annual meeting and then we had a board meeting afterwards. A lot of it was the same stuff that we heard, you know, we did some membership, stuff like that. And then we had a membership committee meeting yesterday morning, right, Amanda? Yeah. And we're in good shape in our membership. I am totally impressed at this small amount that we have at this time of the year. I don't think we've ever been in this point since we formed that committee that, you know, we got. And then you couple that with the new membership. So there's not many that you have to go see. So I think we can spend, the membership committee is going to spend some time on probably attracting a few more new members because I think we're moving in the right direction on that. And then, most of you were on the MICA annual meeting. I thought the Department of Corrections was good. I was a little bit concerned about how many less prisoners we have in our jails. And somebody, and it wasn't, it wasn't none of us, asked about, so how was the staffing situation? Have we reduced staff or anything like that? We really didn't get an answer, did we?
They, roundabout, they said no.
Yeah, I mean, but he didn't want to say no, did he?
No, and they were going to, they're going to close these two. And one of the questions I had put in the chat was, the government came back and said they were going to pay for that. Well, nobody said for how long.
Yeah, yeah, so that part I thought was, and hopefully we'll get back in person pretty quick with MICA. That would be mine. Then I had the one river, or one water, one plan for the Rum River. We actually moved forward on this. We adopted a JPE and it'll come before us, I think, at our next meeting to get final approval. We went, they went through a mock plan and I think that really set the stage for approving this. It's been kind of a very split because it takes two thirds majority to get this passed on the committee that's before that. You know, implement plan will be in an individual. Approved plan will be not so much as projects, but as dollar amounts. And everything for the approved plans are going to have to have seventy five percent agreement, unless they change it here when they meet, which I think is good. Because there's smaller, there's larger counties and counties like Benton County that have a smaller percentage of that. It looks like in this plan, we will have to have a board member on the plan when we get done. Somebody that'll have to be representing Benton County, as will soil and water. So I thought that was pretty good. And we'd like to say thanks to Michelle Meyer and the county attorneys because they really did a good job on that. You know, they took a lot of time and stuff like that, so. And then we had library board meeting right after our last county meeting on the nineteenth, I believe it was. We have this, we like the chair, vice chair, and the finance committee. We have two new, two new people on the board, one commissioner. Lisa Phobia is the chair again, and I'm the current vice chair. I'm on the finance committee and I'll be the finance chair for another year. We are expressing a pretty significant fund balance because of COVID. I mean, we've had employees that haven't worked. We haven't run a lot of miles on the vehicles for a few months. They're actually going to look at maybe. Um, they're actually going to look at maybe trading a vehicle to take up some of that slack while we have the money. Um, and then we, we adopted the budget process to go forward and the finance committee is going to meet on the third Tuesday of this month to get started on that process. So we get it done by, that has to be approved, I think by June with the library board and then brought before us in August. So maybe get good things again from the library, the decrease in county funding is what we always work for.
I was going to say, does that mean next year that the decrease is going to happen again?
Uh, we'll see, you know, um, I guess it depends on, you know, I got two new members on the finance committee. Um, the Wright County, the new Wright County Commissioner, um, according to the, the, what do they call it? The governor's emergency, uh, declaration. The library can mer- can meet virtual, but as soon as that ends, we can't meet virtual no more. And he wants to meet virtual. He doesn't, he lives in Delano, doesn't want to drive the same cloud for the board meetings. And it's just not, it's not in the bylaws and from what I understand is that there wasn't too many commissioners that were, or members that were in favor of that. So, uh, we'll see where that goes. Um, I think that was about all that I had. I did attend a meeting and we'll discuss this in a little bit is, um, yesterday with, uh, Jerry Machi and Chuck Ralph from the Soil and Water on the new, um, upper Mississippi one, uh, water plan that's going forward. And we didn't, you know, not designated for that right now, but, uh, they were looking for some input um, because of what, what we've done in the rum and because this is such a large watershed. And we'll discuss that under Commissioner Concerns here shortly. So, um, that was all I had. And then Beth, did you have anything?
Well, a lot of it was covered. I, um, was on the BEP meeting and they'll be getting, uh, they just finished their, uh, round of, um, people applying uh, for the monies to be dispersed and they'll be working with that with all the entities to get all the monies out for the COVID relief. And, um, they're working on that, um, the Highway ten twenty-three construction. I think they're supposed to be starting this year. That should be interesting. And tonight I have the Minden Township with the St. Cloud Joint, um, Joint Board. And that's, uh, the, do they need a person at Minden Township or is it, this is just virtual?
I don't know how to find out for it and let you know, yeah.
They, they, um, I'm sorry, Beth, yes, they had.
For virtual.
It's in person?
Yes, they have been meeting in person.
Okay.
Oh, okay. So if I can make it in person, I'll try. Otherwise I'll go with the virtual.
Uh, Beth, give me a call and let me know because I believe that they're not set up to do it virtual because it's at the Minden Town Hall. So.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right.
Well, okay, because yeah, well, they sent me a link about virtual, but you don't think it's going to be that way?
Again, I can tell, I'll contact Matt Glazeman.
Yep.
At St. Cloud and find out.
Yep.
Okay, um, yeah, I think they tried to tell me the directions. I, I think I need the address for the township hall just to make sure I get to the right road. If I'm going to head out there tonight.
Anything else, Beth?
I think that should be it.
Okay. Um, then we'll have Commissioner Concerns. We had one item on, on there.
Oh, I did have, yes, I did have one person call me about the, um, waiting in line for the DMV and how that was working. Um, I told him that I believe that you could make appointments and if you were coming in person, they preferred you to sit out in the cargo while they waited for you to come in. They had said that for those that were making phone calls in and getting a call back, they were getting calls back to make up an appointment.
Okay. All right. Um, then under Commissioner Concerns, we have the, the Upper Mississippi One Water One Plan. Um, I explained a little bit before that I met on Monday morning with Amanda and Jerry and Chuck Ralph. And we're having, they're having a meeting on the eighteenth of February. And that can, it consists of all the way from Crow Wing down through Sherburne into Wright Counties. And it consists of the cities of St. Cloud, Sock Rabbits, Sartell. Um, and there's, there are little, some of the northern counties are a little torn between having one plan for that whole thing, you know, being it involves the city of St. Cloud. And then it's, um, Clearwater Watershed, um, which is a fairly large watershed and into Sherburne County. And then you got to realize that we have the whole Mississippi along there. And some of the concerns that Jerry and Chuck brought up yesterday was that if we do this all under one plan, that the cities and the river are going to grab a huge amount of the funding and it wouldn't be available for different watersheds. And I know Morrison has got the, the same concerns. Um, so, you know, we'd like, even the, the Elk River Watershed is in that Upper Mississippi one. And, you know, the, the county's done a huge amount of work in the Elk River Watershed. And some of that funding may be lost if we, if that, um, Jerry Machi would even kind of prefer maybe we split it into three, that we have an Elk River one and the Upper Mississippi Sartell. And, but I, from what I gathered, talking to some, I don't think there's a lot of interest in three. There may be more interest in two. Um, so anyway, um, I don't, you know, I, I met, met with them yesterday and I, we need to designate somebody not to be on that, they'll, they'll come later on, but to go to this meeting to, in order to have the county funds. And, and I guess I'd like to hear how, what, you know, what you think of which way we should go, what we should do.
Are, are they, uh, thinking the same way of what happened with the Rum River?
Well, I think that's why they wanted me to be in that meeting is because, you know, the Rum River was, we have, the Rum River was largely, uh, a couple of counties that wanted it this way.
Yep.
And the other way. And then, you know, once, um, our county to the north came in and got more active and, and we, we, they could not get to the seventy-five percent to be a JPE. And it was split between the, the joint collaboratives and a joint entity. And a joint entity is actually a little better if you got all the, the rules set on it. So that was why they kind of wanted to know if I wanted to come to this next meeting in order to discuss which route we're going to go because you're going to have a lot more players. You know, you start talking Sterns County and City of St. Cloud and all that. And if they're just going to have one, um, body that's going to decide the funding, I'm afraid Benton County and Morrison County, we're going to get left out. And, you know, and what water comes in at Morrison County eventually comes to Benton guys. It's kind of like, we had the Elk River, we always told them that what happens in Benton County is going to be your problem down the road. So, um, and then they'll have to get a fiscal agent and all that other stuff set up to do that. So, um, they're going to meet on the eighteenth and it's, you know, your SWCD directors and, um, Soil and Water Board and then anybody else that is designated to be a rep, so.
Mr. Chair, I think you'd be a good person for that.
Okay, yeah, and, you know, and, and once you went through the process, it makes it a lot easier to understand. It took me four or five meetings to get, you know, I, you know, uh, thank what's her name from, uh, Malax County? She really helped fill me in a few times, Jenny Reynolds, Commissioner Reynolds, in what was going on in the rum. You know, and once we started and, you know, because it, it's counties, you know, every county funds their SWCD. And it's county funds that go towards them. And if you're going to have an outside entities, you know, dictating what the county SWCD does with county money, you know, we may not get what we should be getting if we don't do it right. So.
Mr. Chair, just to give you a heads up, the AMC Virtual Legislative Conference is on the eighteenth too.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, virtually Zoom.
Okay. What time is that one?
Uh, starts at nine o'clock.
Oh, yeah, and I think this, that's when this one is going to start. Okay.
Nine to four thirty.
Okay. They'll have, I'll maybe have to call Jerry and see if they realize that.
Actually, I just got that notice as we were talking here. So it's just came in front of us.
Mr. Chair, are you looking for a motion for an appointment?
I don't know if we need a motion or just a consensus.
I, I, I think that would be a good idea for you and then have one of us two from Sock Rabbits be the alternate being a flow through Sock Rabbits.
Right, and, you know, and, and if we can get it to be where there's two, then we could have another, you know, we definitely need another commissioner to do the, the St. Cloud Mississippi Watershed, which would be Sock Rabbit, St. Cloud on a way down.
I, I'd do it as a motion and then we can add it to our committee listing.
Yep.
Okay.
Commissioner Hyden or Kapinski interested in being the alternate or?
Well, yeah, but we have time to think about this too, though, right?
Well.
Or not.
If they decide on the eighteenth to, to split it, then it would be in motion right away. Because the, there's a funding package that says it's everything for the Upper Mississippi is funding. So then they'll divide that package and then they'll move forward with, you know, Sherburne County.
Try to divide that on the eighteenth?
They won't divide it, but they will set, you know, if, if they can agree that they need to do two.
Oh, sure.
Then, um, Bowser will just divide that up according to acres and miles and whatever they use.
We might need clarification on the eighteenth though, because all the other commissioners too have the same thing they do. And obviously we might have to change that meeting.
Yep.
So, you have interest in an alternate or, I don't have a deal with that now?
I would be interested.
Whatever works, you know, I, I just, I just feel that one of the Sock Rabbits commissioners.
I do too.
They really should be on it.
All right, I'll make a motion to appoint, uh, Commissioner Pop as their representative from this board to the Mississippi, uh, rivershed appointment. And then also Commissioner Kapinski as the alternate.
And I think if they do go with one, we will probably be allowed to.
To correct.
To be on there.
So would you like him just as a second appointment or as the alternate?
I would guess.
I think as the alternate, he could certainly.
Alternate can move up to.
We can make it a second appointment.
I'll leave the motion as is then.
Okay. That'd be perfect.
Is there a second?
Second, oop, second.
Motion's been made and seconded to appoint Commissioner Pop and Commissioner Kapinski as, uh, representatives and alternate. Is any other discussion?
Share a few rules, babe? Aye.
No.
Are we ready for a vote?
No, then, okay, Vicky, call the roll.
Mr. Schlungen?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Mr. Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Hyden?
Aye.
Motion carries on a five oh vote. That was the only thing I had. And then, um, set committee of the whole.
Uh, we have two, Mr. Chair, the first is the Township Officers, um, Spring Meeting, we'll call it. April eighth, seven thirty, St. George Town Hall. St. George Town Hall, April eighth, seven thirty. And you just all mentioned the AMC Legislative Conference, Thursday, February eighteenth, beginning at nine. It is virtual and, uh, we will, we will register everyone and then you'll get the, you'll get the meeting link via email. And that is all we had.
Members in regard to that meeting just here where I am scheduled to be gone over that time period. And if I'm, have access with Wi-Fi, I, I will attend.
Okay.
Uh, one more just to mention, Mr. Chair, Park Commission meeting will occur February twenty-second at five thirty here in the boardroom, Park Commission meeting.
And that's it.
I had one more question.
Sure, Beth.
Um, I, I got a email from a constituent that was concerned about the cost for the, um, that went on the negotiations and maybe it wasn't a relevant, um, she didn't think it was relevant that they, or, um, or she was thinking that they didn't, it wasn't going to be used or was it appropriate, one to be used for negotiations and another one was needing to be done?
I guess, I don't understand, Beth, if it's, is it something to do with the comp plan or?
Um, uh, for the negotiations that we haven't finished yet for the employees?
Um, we probably shouldn't be discussing that at a public meeting.
So we could get, could we get a motion in a second and, uh, set those committees of the whole?
So moved. Second. Motion's been made in second. Do the roll, Vicky.
Commissioner Schlungen?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Mr. Hyden?
Aye.
Hey, Monty. Got a couple of items on here.
Uh, well, Mr. Chairman, Amanda is here, uh, to, to talk to you all about tax abatement financing. And she's joined by Jason from Ellers and, so Jason, um, what I'm going to do is I'm going to go make you our presenter. So you're going to see a message. You're going to see a message coming up on your screen. And then, once you, you click a yes on that, then you're going to click on share screen down at the bottom. And then we'll see your screen. Good deal. We're there. All right.
I'll just give up.
So are yours.
Thanks, Monty. Uh, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the county commissioners. Um, I have invited, uh, Jason Arzval from Ellers uh, to provide you a little bit of information on tax abatement and tax increment financing. Um, these are economic development tools, um, that we are, um, you know, that we can use within the county on various different economic development projects. Um, and you may be aware that we're already working on some economic development projects within the county. This is just really a good refresher, um, for you to receive information on tax abatement and tax increment financing. So please, if you have any questions, um, feel free to either direct them to me or Jason. And I will turn it over to Jason to, um, kind of start his presentation.
Good morning. Can everybody hear me okay?
Morning.
Good morning.
Perfect, thank you. So again, I'm, I'm Jason Arzval at Ellers. Uh, uh, senior municipal advisor there and I've been working with Amanda on several projects throughout the county. And so I just have a, a brief presentation for you today and, you know, happy to go through this uh, as quickly or as, um, slowly as you'd like me to. But this is the overview of the topic that we thought we'd cover with you. Uh, just talk about, uh, when you get these requests for assistance, you know, kind of best practices in terms of how to handle those uh, based for TIF and tax abatement. A little bit about the types of TIF districts that are out there and some things that you need to be mindful of as as a county board. And then a few examples, if time allows, that, uh, explain how some of this has been used. So just very briefly, before we even talk about using any of these economic development tools, I think there's important things here to think about. One is, you know, make sure you understand how you want to deploy these within your, uh, county. So, you know, we advocate for having a plan and policies and procedures in place to help direct the staff. Make sure that you're giving what you all want as a board, uh, with respect to the use of these tools. Uh, and then your staff can work to establish a good process to review these applications, standardizing that and, you know, treating everybody the same way as they come forward to make these requests is usually the best way for you all to make sure these are done appropriately. And then, um, you know, making sure that, uh, these requests are going to meet your goals. And then part of that is helping to answer what we're going to talk about is this but for test, which some of you may have heard and I'll talk about it in a little more detail. So you might, many places ask, why would we even be considering the use of these tools? Uh, here are some reasons why communities have chosen to use, uh, TIF and/or abatement. Uh, basically, eh, uh, there are projects or development or redevelopment in your community that you would like to see occur that aren't happening without assistance. And that's really what that but for test that I talked about is all about. These projects would not be happening but for the use of these tools. And some of the goals, uh, kind of the more basic ones are to create and retain jobs. That's a really fundamental one that you all ensure have dealt with. Uh, the other redeveloping polluted areas is a big, is a big way that this is used. Remediation of polluted sites and construction of affordable housing, those are really some of the key and high level ones. But some of the more nuanced ones that maybe folks don't think about as often when you're talking about promoting economic development, one is, is. One is, is changing the market in a community, and an example of that, what do I mean by that? Uh, we work in several places where, for example, uh, certain types of housing may not be being constructed, and there are probably some market dynamics for that. The big one is often that there aren't enough comparable, let's, let's use rental housing as an example, there, the existing comparable rents in the, uh, community may not justify the cost of new construction. Even though, uh, you all may know that people would be willing to pay those rents if new, new housing was built. So that's a role for these tools to play, can fill that gap, get the housing built, and prove that there's actually a market in your community, uh, for that type of, and then hopefully continue to have it get built without assistance in the future, so. So this is one of the nuanced, uh, ways that these are, tools are used. You know, checking higher paying jobs, we talk about numbers of jobs, but often the goals will be set to make sure that the jobs are paying a living or higher than a living wage, and then even higher value buildings, you know, building your long-term tax base uh, by using these tools that are out there. You may have, uh, types of development that just don't exist in a given community, and you wanna see those occur. Uh, you know, helping shape the look and feel of development, this is something that, you know, you have the ability to do if you want to see something built in a certain way, that you've got a developer telling you that it's not financially feasible, and they'd like to build it the way they want to. There's an opportunity there for you to use one of these tools to help them overcome that financial hurdle and see things built the way you'd like to see them constructed. And then just generally strengthening your, your overall economy. So I talked about the but-for test, and again, the basic what this is, is a defining that's made that says this development would not be possible but for the use of TIF or abatement. And, you know, if, if we're doing our job and we're making this finding correctly, you know, the, when the project moves forward, we can say with certainty, and you can say, uh, with certainty to your constituents that, look, we were capturing these revenues and diverting them back to the project, but they would never have been here in the first place had we not provided assistance to get this project built. So, you know, a lot of, a lot of people will say, well, geez, you're, you're taking these taxes away and diverting them back to the project, that's taking money away from the taxpayers. Well, if we've done our jobs correctly, uh, we can say, uh, with certainty that that project wouldn't have been there, and those tax revenues wouldn't have existed at all. So that's the fundamental goal of that but-for test, and something that, uh, is, should be a part of every project. You all as an elected body, if a project comes before you, are, are gonna make that finding. The statute for tax increment actually requires you to make that finding, and while it's not statutorily mandated for the use of tax abatement, we still recommend that standard as a best practice for the use of any public assistance, including tax abatement. So how do we, how do we meet that? How do we demonstrate that we're meeting that but-for test? Uh, one of the, I talked about a process, you have folks apply, uh, for assistance. Part of that application process will involve the submission of detailed financial information for a, you know, an income-producing real estate project, like an apartment or, uh, a for-lease industrial building. That's gonna come in the form of a, of a pro forma, their budget and projections for the construction and operation of that particular asset, and that can then involve an in-depth analysis, and that analysis can ferret out whether the gap is indeed there, and is that gap, the size of that gap, as much as the applicant is suggesting, or is it maybe something less? And I would tell you that often, through this analysis, we determine that the amount that's necessary is really something less, maybe than what they're asking for. But the goal in this is to really maximize those private sources of funding, so debt and equity, and really minimize the public assistance necessary, making sure that that amount that would be provided is only what's necessary to make the project financially feasible and no more. Does that make sense to everybody? Are there questions before I move on to the details about tax abatement?
I think we're good to move on.
All right, I'll do it. So, jumping into tax abatement, what, what is tax abatement? Uh, this is a working definition of tax abatement, and we talk about it as the ability to capture and use all or a portion of the property tax revenues within a defined geographic area for a defined period of time. And it's typically to assist with housing and commercial development, and I say that because though there are housing and commercial properties or projects that aren't tax increment eligible, so often uh, tax abatement becomes one of the default tools, and you'll see why here as we kind of move forward through this discussion. But really, kind of at the most basic fundamental level, uh, what, what's happening with tax abatement is, uh, if you enter in an agreement with a property owner to provide tax abatement, they're gonna pay their taxes just as they normally would, and then the, uh, through an agreement that you would enter into with them, a portion of, of the, in this case, the county's piece of that tax bill would be rebated back to them for a period of time. So it's really just as simple as that, uh, and not overly complicated. Often, we'll, we'll make sure that the portion that's being abated is only the new amount of the taxes that come as a result of the project, but it doesn't necessarily have to be that way. And there are limitations in statute for this, uh, you know, and what those limitations are is it's ten percent of the jurisdiction's net tax capacity or two hundred thousand, whichever is greater. And so, and you know, in your case, that's gonna be, you're gonna be looking at ten percent of your net tax capacity, which is a a high, a higher amount than you'd likely would ever approve in the form of tax abatement, so while there is a limitation, you have plenty of capacity to do, so you might see fit in communities. So how's it work? Really, this is just what I described. You know, you're, you're choosing to rebate a portion of, of your property tax. With tax abatement, every jurisdiction needs to affirmatively approve and choose to participate, so. This is a little different than TIF, which we'll talk about, but in this case, if someone comes with a tax abatement request and they want the county to participate, and they would also like the city in which the project is located to participate, both of those entities need to approve that separately. And then there are duration limits that come along with this, so those are listed there. If, if I say all three entities, because the ones that can abate are city, county, and school, and if all three participate in a project, then the limit is fifteen years. If only one or two of those entities participate, then that duration is extended to twenty years, the idea being that you might need a longer period of time to repay assistance with fewer jurisdictions participating. And if you happen to enter into a, an abatement and pass a resolution that didn't specify how long the term was gonna be, the statute says that the default term is eight years. Now, I don't know, I have not seen a project where it's, this resolution is silent as to the term, so uh, typically that's not a factor, but that's just a piece of the statute, just to be aware of. And at the bottom, I talk about using this to retain existing businesses. One of the things with abatement is that, um, you can actually abate the taxes of an existing business, even if that business isn't investing in creating a new value. So you could say, okay, you're, you're paying existing taxes to the county, we could choose to abate those. And the, the, one of the reasons you might do that would be to retain an existing business in its existing location. That's not commonly done, and the reason for that is because it effectively represents a tax increase on everybody else, albeit probably unnoticedable, but that is still remains to be the case, whereas in tax increment, which we'll talk about, you're, you can only capture the added taxes, so abatement differs in that way. So I talked about already a little bit about who may grant tax abatement, cities, counties, schools, and towns, each, every, each and everyone needs to approve those, and for those commercial properties that are paying the state general education levy tax, those taxes cannot be abated. The creating of a tax abatement is, is a relatively simple and straightforward process. Uh, it really just requires, uh, you to hold a public hearing and, uh, pass a resolution. And that resolution, as I talked about, would generally state the term of the abatement, you know, how long you, are you planning to abate the taxes? Uh, what are the public benefits that are anticipated to accrue to the community as a result of that tax abatement? Uh, there are some other required findings that you need to make in that resolution, and, uh, talk about how long it's gonna take to repay, uh, the proposed tax abatement in the resolution. So, once that public hearing is held, and once the abatement, uh, the resolution is passed, then you have effectively, uh, the ability to use tax abatement for a particular project. So I'm gonna leave, uh, tax abatement and jump in a little bit into TIF. Before I do that, if there's any questions about abatement, I'm certainly happy to answer those or we can make it to the end.
Jason, this is Commissioner Pop. I got one question, where you had cities, counties, uh, schools. Do they all have to agree, or just any entity can agree? Um, you know, townships?
Uh, yeah, great question. Uh, they don't all have to agree. Uh, in, in tax abatement, if a, you know, if a business want, if they may set out wanting tax abatement from the city, county, and the school, for example, and uh, you know, there may be a one or two jurisdictions, or even all three, that just choose not to participate. But if, if a city, for example, wants to go it alone without county and school participation, they can do that.
Okay.
Uh, like what county wanted to move ahead without the other jurisdictions participating, they could choose to do that.
Because, in, in just a little bit that I know, I would think that schools, school districts are probably not too, uh, in, you know, enthused about doing tax abatement, right?
That's correct. In our experience, um, you know, schools, uh, generally do not participate in tax abatement. Now, there have been examples where schools have participated, and, and sometimes it can make sense. I think as a general rule, they really don't engage in economic development, but I have seen requests come before school boards that might involve a project that, let's say, for example, may increase enrollment, and then there may be interest and a, and a reason why they may wanna participate that way, but generally speaking, you're correct. It's very rare that schools participate.
Okay, thanks.
All right, I'll jump into TIF. I've listed the statutory references there. I don't recommend anybody go read those necessarily, but just in case, you know, they're, uh, for you. Um, you know, so, so tax increment, this is a similar definition, uh, as, as the abatement definition. Uh, little, few differences here. We talk about the ability to capture and use most of the increased local property tax revenues from new developments within a defined geographic area for a defined period of time, and then the last piece there is critical, without approval of the other taxing jurisdiction. So, if a project is eligible for a TIF district, and a city, for example, wants to uh, go ahead and set one of those up, they can do that, uh, without requiring the approval of all those other taxing jurisdictions, like we talked about with tax abatement. And when they do that, then all those taxes from those jurisdictions will be captured in that district. This is a visual representation of how this works, and I realize this is a, a lot to take in, but if you, if you're more, um, you know, verbally focused, that definition that I just presented is better. This is a visual way to represent it. What this shows is, uh, over time, and on the left, you've got a project that's getting built, the blue, the blue bar represents the taxes that a particular parcel is already paying. And in tax increment, those are frozen, those never are, are collected as increments, those continue to be paid. But what happens is that you've got a project that might start, and in the red there, what you start to see is that while it's under construction, the value, because of that new building that's going on that site, of that property continues to increase. And the red area there is what is captured in a tax increment district. So there'll be new taxes that are paid as a result of development. Those, some of those, not all of them, again, there are some things that are excluded from TIF, but the city, county, school, and other small taxing jurisdiction taxes are captured, and that's what that red, uh, area of the graph is showing, and those annual revenues are available to help uh, fund a project that you may wanna do, uh, in your community. And then what happens is that, once the project is fully on the tax rolls, it stays in the district for, uh, whatever duration is allowed in the district type, and we'll go into that a little, little bit more detail. And until such time that the district expires, or if you've repaid whatever agreed-upon assistance to a developer, and once that's done, the district would shut down. And then the idea being that now you've got in the area there that's in kind of that, um, light orange color is, all those taxes now are going to all the different taxing jurisdictions. So the idea is that you're, you're, you're using this tool to, uh, do develop a property that's got a relatively low base of taxes and achieve some development you wanna see in the community with the long-term goal of having that, uh, site have the, all the full taxes in orange going to the, to the various communities. So it's this idea that you're a short-term, uh, investment for more of a long-term tax-based team. And that's as simple, really, as it is. I mean, there's complicating pieces in here, and we do spend, you know, two hours in a seminar that we put on going through all the gory details of this, or trying to keep this at a, at a relatively high level. So you can't just create a TIF district anywhere, you need to have a, a reason and a, and a, um, authority in statute to be able to do that, and these are organized by the different types of districts, and by the kind of activity that you would maybe wanna undertake, right? So if you're looking to review substandard or obsolete buildings, or generally do, you know, um, redevelopment, there are a couple different options there. One of those is a redevelopment district, and that allows you up to twenty-six years of increment collections to offset redevelopment costs. The other is renewal and renovation, it's the same thing, it's just a little lower standard that is required to meet the test to actually establish one of these districts, and so you have fewer years, sixteen years, the idea being that maybe your redevelopment problem isn't as acute, and so you don't need the full twenty-six years. Uh, talk of affordable housing, and so there is a district that you can create, uh, called a housing district with a twenty-six-year maximum, uh, duration, and the idea there is that your uh, housing is, is serving folks at certain income thresholds, and so provided it does that, it's allowed to be in a tax increment district. One that's not listed there under affordable housing is, you can do, in, uh, Greater Minnesota, you can do an economic development district, which I'll talk about in a minute here, which is a nine-year district for workforce housing with certain conditions. So the legislature recognized that there was a challenge providing housing that didn't need to have income thresholds as low as the affordable housing, uh, TIF district required, that the incomes there weren't really the issue, it was providing new housing to attract folks to live and work in communities that had jobs, but maybe didn't have housing to attract workers. So there is a provision that does allow you to do that as well in the TIF statute. And that's really under the economic development district, uh, one that we would typically do for job and tax base creation, which is listed there at the bottom. That's a nine-year district, and that's the one you can do on greenfield, uh, development, but it's only uh, really for, uh, manufacturing, warehouse, distribution, research and development, telemarketing-type facilities, and so that's, it has to, a project would need to meet one of those criteria in order for you to be able to establish a, an economic development district there. The approval for these, you know, there's a little more, uh, process involved with respect to a TIF district, there are, uh, these can be created by city, county, HRA, EDA, typically they're, you know, almost always done by, by a city or EDA, local EDA, HRA. But there, there is a plan document that needs to be established, and a project area plan, which is just a larger area within which you're gonna do, uh, development work. That plan needs to lay out what the policy objectives are, set a budget, talk about what the anticipated TIF revenues and expenditures are going to look like. Uh, there are notifications that need to go out with this, public hearing that need to be held, and, and just a lot more process than is involved with, uh, tax abatement. And at the end of all of this, uh, approval of the elected officials must, uh, occur following a public hearing, as I mentioned, so that's always gonna have to be approved in that manner, uh, when it goes before, uh, the, the elected officials. So, uh, I've got a little piece in here about what does the, what does the county, you know, really need to be thinking about when these tax increment districts come forward? So as I mentioned, if, if a city within your county chooses to establish a district, there is an approval uh, that's given by the board, but there are notifications that must be sent as part of that process that I talked about. One of those is if we're talking about a housing or a redevelopment or renewal and renovation district, there's a requirement that the city notify the county board member representing that area at least thirty days prior to even publishing the hearing notice. So it would just be a letter that goes out to that particular board member. It would just say, hey, you know, look, the, the city's contemplating the creation of a TIF district for this purpose, uh, and this is that notification letting you, making you aware that that's happening. So that would go out. If it's an economic development district, for whatever reason, the statute does not require that, and that notice wouldn't necessarily go out in that instance. But you will always get, uh, the second line there, which is a, what's called a fiscal implications letter and notice, and so, for every district, the city must send out a notice, uh, that it outlines what potential fiscal impacts there might be as a result of the development within the tax increment district. And that needs to be sent thirty days prior to the actual public hearing itself. And if, in the event that there might be impacts to county roads, uh, there's more time allowed for your review of that particular district, and then that needs to be sent forty-five days prior to the public hearing. So that you can review that to see if there might be any impacts to county roads needing to be mitigated through the process. And then, like I said, at the bottom line there, th- this, there's no approval, while you get notification, there is an While you get notification, there isn't any approval granted by the county. There are a few minor exceptions to that. I talked about that workforce housing TIF. That's an economic development district. There is actually a provision in there, when it was added, that does require both the county and the school district to affirmatively approve by resolution any district created for that purpose. And you might also see, what, what we also see sometimes, the cities going in to request special legislation for some of their districts that may be, you know, there are, there are all these requirements that go with these districts. And if a project is delayed, it might be missing some of the thresholds set out in statute for it to proceed. And so sometimes they'll ask the legislature to grant an exception to one of these timeframes, for example, in a district. And whenever that's done, the legislature typically includes a requirement that says that, that the county and school districts need to approve the special legislative change for that particular district. So those are two instances where you might see approval for a district if you not, if you're not creating one yourself. This is just a chart here, and I won't spend a lot of time on it, that compares the differences between TIF and tax abatement. But, you know, the one of the things with tax abatement that I will point out here is that you can use that for almost any purpose. You can use it for retail development. You can use it for market-grade housing development. You can use it for just about anything you want. TIF is not that way. Every district has restricted uses that go along with it. And so there's just a little more flexibility with abatement, but a little more income generation with tax increment. So there's always trade-offs with each of these two different tools. I talked about the, 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 how you, what you capture in each of these. TIF, your only new value. Abatement, you can capture all of the value. There is a limitation on abatement that we talked about with the tax capacity number there. There are, there is no limitation on the number of districts a particular jurisdiction can create. And then, again, the, the use of the dollars that are generated are dictated by the type of district and not so limited by the abatement. So when we do either of these two things, TIF or abatement, what we're doing is we're basically creating an annual stream of revenue, which is great, but how do we get that to help a project today, right? The, the, you know, $100,000 a year for the next 20 years is, is wonderful. But if a project needs to get built today, how can we do that? So what we need is a financing mechanism that can take it into that future tax increment stream. And the most common way that we are doing that anymore is through what's called a pays-as-you-go note. And what that means is that a developer or business that may be asking for assistance is going to pay for all of those costs upfront. If they're asking for a million dollars, they have to come up with a million dollars to pay for all the upfront project costs. And then what happens is that a note is issued by the jurisdiction that enters into this agreement with the, with the developer that says, we'll pay you a million dollars over time, but we're only going to pay you from the tax increment or tax abatement that's generated by the project. And so that's how that works. Then those, the project gets built. The jurisdiction that enters into the agreement is only obligated to pay to the extent that those revenues actually materialize. And if they don't, for whatever reason, then you're not obligated to pay the amount of the note that may not be repaid over time. So that's less risk, obviously, to city, county, and is the favorable way to do this. And any more developers have had no problem obtaining this financing. So there really isn't a lot of reason to consider alternatives. But there are instances where you may want to consider alternatives to this. One is, is you can use, you know, an inter-fund loan, which is essentially using your own resources, advancing them to the project, and then relying on that future stream of income to repay yourself. And so that's a little more risky. You're, you're using your own dollars and hoping that you get paid back in the future from this development, you know, so it's not as commonly done. But if you have a community that's got a, you know, like, we see this a lot in a high-priority redevelopment area, right? There may be an opportunity to purchase a property that you really want to redevelop. And so you might go ahead and do that and plan to repay yourself over time when a project occurs, and you've got increments or abatement that you can use to do that. That's just one example. There, there could be several others, but it really just depends on your own risk tolerance and how, what, what kind of priority a project might be that might, you know, affect your willingness to take on a little more risks. And then there are bonds. There are a couple of bond options. You could actually issue a, a tax increment financing bond without a referendum. Again, this isn't as commonly done, because obviously, if you issue general obligation bonds, you are then obligated to repay those regardless of whether those tax increment revenues materialize or not. And this is even more risky than an internal loan, because at least with an internal loan, if there are no revenues, you don't have to pay yourself back right away. But you do need to pay bondholders. And so, you know, this is obviously a riskier proposition to look at using general obligation bonds. And then there are TIF revenue bonds, and these are bonds that then would be quite, you know, maybe used risky, because they would be relying on the revenues materializing. It's a higher-cost option. Investors taking the full risk of non-payment. But I will tell you that it's almost impossible to get one of these underwritten before a project is actually built. It's more likely that you'd see these, once a project is built, an increment is, is established and actually being generated. And then maybe you might be able to see one of these bonds issued against that future revenue. So not a great upfront financing source for projects. So if we have time, it's okay. I'll run through just a few practical examples of how this has worked, one of which is recent and actually in, in the county. It's the Topin Merrill Expansion in Sartell. So it's a project that, that we've worked on. Probably you're familiar with this. This was, they approached the city and, and said, look, we, we'd be interested in doing an expansion to our existing facility. They made a request for tax increments. This qualified as an economic development district with that nine-year maximum term that I talked about. I don't know why that says income requirements. I'm sorry, there must be a holdover. There were no income requirements here. There were, there were job requirements, is what that should say. So, by, this is a, a picture of that expansion actually taking place. There were 70,000 square feet total added here. And that expansion included both new production space and some office space related to that production space. What the city worked out was a, was a pays-as-you-go note. Like I said, this was pays-as-you-go. They issued that note to the business saying, we'll agree to pay you $670,000 over time, which is what was projected to generate in this particular district based on the new value they were creating there. And then they're only obligated to pay from that increment to the extent it materializes, just like I talked about. If for some reason that's short, again, that's the business's risk, not the city's. And then you've got an agreement that goes along with these. And so you can specify, oh, there are certain goals that you want met within the community. In this case, there was a requirement to create at least 25 new jobs at $19 an hour, exclusive of benefits. So benefits would be on top of that, as I recall. And then that also helped leverage other funding in the project. The project accessed funding from the state Department of Employment and Economic Development. So that also went into this project, and those things all work together to produce a, an expanded Topin Merrill presence there in Sartell. This one, just very quickly, is an example of, of a, of a site in Hutchinson. This was, you know, buildings that were vacant and really needed to be redeveloped and torn down. But one of the problems was that the cost to do that exceeded what anybody was willing to pay and what they could make work financially for the project. So it qualified as a redevelopment district. This is just an aerial photo, what it, what the site included. It was a gas station pond shop in a big lot. So the creation of the district went ahead. It allowed for the developer then to finance the demolition and construction of this Morrisville Commons project, which took out all of the properties in the aerial photo there. To kind of back up, you can see what was there. And now in the corner, you've got more coverage and a lot more long-term tax base there. And then you've got a project now that, that looks like this, that includes these uses. And an armed forces recruiting facility. So that's how that one was able to work. Tax increment really helped take away those barriers to redevelopment and allow this. One other one here is in the city of Ramsey, and this is an example where, which we see quite often, is that there's land that a city or a community would like to develop for industrial and job creation. But there's the challenge of extending infrastructure and how you're going to pay for all of that to get those areas ready for development. That's exactly what we had in the city of Ramsey. Looking at building out a new Bunker Lake Industrial Park, and really needed to overcome the hurdle of trying to extend the roads and utilities. And so working with them, there was a couple strategies employed here. One was to look at tax increment financing and use an economic development TIF district, like I talked about with a nine-year term. Those uses that are required, that I talked about, are also listed there. And how that worked was there was $218,000 in tax increment assistance for the first building that came into that, and that helped offset the cost of extending upfront, the cost of extending infrastructure, streets and utilities. And then another building that came in, but this particular building was for Adrenaline Sports Center. And if, if you know what that is, it's like an indoor, you know, sports facility that, that, you know, kids can go and practice baseball and volleyball and, and soccer inside. And they do that, you know, it's a business model that they're paying for that time. But what, but excludes the use of, of tax increment for recreational purposes. So it couldn't be used here. So this would have been a candidate for either abatement, or in this case, the city has some existing funds that it was going to use to make that feasible as well. So it helped offset infrastructure costs, allowed those two buildings to be constructed. And those are up and, and operating today as of this day. So that's all I have prepared in terms of the formal comments, but certainly happy to answer any details about abatement or tax.
Thank you, Jason. Do you have any questions for Jason or I as we kind of give you an overview of some of the tools that are available for economic development?
No, I think he covered it quite well. I mean.
Can we get, can we get the?
Slides, please.
That would be great.
Yeah, I guess there was things in there I didn't know about.
Yeah, they're really great tools to use for economic development projects that happen in Benton County.
How many districts do we have right now?
Monty?
I'm sorry, I don't know the number. I'll have to get that for you.
Have you done any abatements in the last year? The tax abatements?
We have, the county tax abatement for probably at least a decade.
Okay.
I haven't one done so far.
Okay.
I've worked on abatement projects and TIF projects when I was working with the city of Elk River, and they're very useful tools.
Okay. Is, is this something, Amanda, that you would like to go forward with and, and use more as you work in Benton County?
You, you know, it is, it's helpful. It's a helpful tool. Both of those tools are actually very helpful. So yeah, I would like the county board to at least consider the use of, of those two tools at, at a very minimum, just to kind of, you know, promote economic development as we move forward.
And I guess from my standpoint, we, we rely on you more because you're more used to it than what, you know, we have seen in the past, so.
Certainly. And, you know, if, as we receive applications, you know, we're more than capable of, of processing those applications. We use Ellers as our financial consultant to help, you know, process and, and materialize the applications as we review them.
So I don't know. Did you present to the city of Rice last night?
I did, yes. You guys will, the county board will be seeing a project come in front of you in the next couple of weeks. A little precursor, but I will provide, Monty, a little bit more information on that. And, and then you'll, you'll also see some information on that project.
Okay. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think both of these tools are absolutely needed in this county. I, I think we need to, we need to spur some more growth. I, I know we're getting more and more, and the taxes are coming down. You guys did a great job. I think we, I think we need to now spur some business growth, economic growth on that. And it's going to, going to take some time, but these are two great tools.
You know, you know, relating to that is when we had the, the, what was, when the extension people came in, one of the things that they provided us with, that we have the workforce in this county and a young workforce compared to some of the other counties, that, you know, that seemed to be one of the things they said was that county had going for it. So if we get more business, we can keep more people working in this county.
I look at, I, I look at it, our, our three major cities, Sacreappis, Rice, and Foley have two-lane road, or four-lane roads coming to them or through them.
Right.
Let's use them to build the business.
A lot of good corner there.
Yeah.
Wonderful. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I do have one more topic. I don't know, Monty, you didn't have it on the agenda. Can we talk about that, too?
It's all related, isn't it?
Okay, it's all related. So I wanted to also talk to you a little bit about the county's revolving loan fund program. And as you're, and, and Jason, you don't have to, we appreciate all your presentation.
Thank you, Jason.
But you don't have to stay on if you don't want to. You certainly can, though.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Jason. I was prepared to talk to you this morning about the county's revolving loan fund program. As you are aware, that you do have a revolving loan fund program, although it's not necessarily utilized to its fullest extent. We're hoping at BEP to maybe propose to the county board to potentially take that responsibility over and help promote that program, facilitate and administer the program on the county's behalf. And just to kind of give you a little bit of information on that is, so the, the county's revolving loan fund program, you already have a finance committee put in place. We're proposing to possibly take that and establish our own finance committee under Benton Economic Partnership to process and facilitate some of those applications as they come available. And there's a couple of different benefits to that. One, we are able to process and facilitate those projects in a confidential manner. We can, you know, process the applications. If they come to fruition, we can present it to the county board in a complete package and help facilitate those projects that way. Help, so the revolving loan fund program essentially offers gap financing for, for certain economic development projects. And to facilitate that process, it's sometimes a little bit more efficient, you know, coming from an outside entity, you know, processing those applications and bringing it forward to the county board for consideration. So right now, you do have a finance committee established. I believe you have six people on that board. But we're proposing to create maybe a smaller, well-established committee consisting of finance professionals in and around Benton County. So consisting of banking or development, and, and maybe even a BEP board member to facilitate some of that discussion and, and processing. So it's something that I, I thought I would bring to the county board for consideration. We, just to kind of give you a little bit more background, you currently have, I think, two loans, two active loans out at this point with a total current principal balance of $336,549. That's the principal balance due on, on the two loans that are currently out. You have about $400,000 as a cash, the ending cash balance as of January 1st. So you have about $400,000 in this account. So shifting that responsibility from maybe county staff to BEP is what we're asking the county board to consider this morning. And if the county board can, is willing to consider that, we can work with the county attorney to put in some sort of agreement together.
Okay, so I guess that was my next question. Monty, do we have to have some kind of an agreement with the county attorney?
That'd be a good idea, right? To set forth roles, responsibilities, and so on. Yeah, and, and, yeah, I would, I would recommend that, too.
I guess, what do you guys think?
Do you have any cost projections on what it may cost us to have BEP administer this?
I would think that would be, that would fall under your annual membership dues.
Okay. Mr. Chair? Where did the, where did we come up with the money, or where does the money come from for this, for this? You, you say we've got $400,000, $300,000 out there. Where did the money, where does it come from?
Monty, I don't know if you want me to.
I could try and tell the story. It came from lots of places. I understand that a, a long time ago, some of it was county funds. Quite a bit of it, though, came from the Minnesota Investment Fund, where we got money from the state. We, in turn, put it out in loans, and then it was repaid. We were able to retain it.
Okay.
That's where a lot of it came from.
USDA?
Some, some is USDA, although about two, three years ago, we, we fully repaid all the USDA funds, but some of that is residual USDA funds. So the nice thing, though, is that all the funds that are in our account are, are free of any state or USDA string. of any state or USDA strings anymore. That's all gone, because we repaid the USD loans, and we also repaid a portion of the Minnesota Investment Fund dollars about a year ago. So all those strings are now gone, and really, the conditions that we impose are the ones that we choose to do so locally, which is really nice. The other side of the coin is the balance is quite a bit smaller now, but again, the strings are gone, so. Doesn't mean in the future that we couldn't grow the fund more by getting a new Minnesota Investment Fund loan or other USDA. We could certainly possibly, if the opportunity presents itself, to grow the loan fund.
Absolutely.
Is, it used to be, when I first started here, there was probably over a million dollars in the fund. It was substantially larger.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think, I think trying to build this back up would be very good. I, and, and as, at the same time, you know, making sure we're using it to attract business. This partnered with the TIP and, and abatement is what we need to really focus on, and, and great job with everything. So are we working with the cities too, to make sure that, because what I've seen in the past is cities don't necessarily always work with the county, county don't necessarily always work with the city. And I think this has really got to be a team effort to make sure that we're attracting as many new potential businesses or retaining our businesses and, and helping them expand. And I think that takes collaboration on both sides.
Yeah, and I, and I will say that we're trying to change that trajectory a little bit, like, moving forward and working with our cities and our partner, you know, partner cities on, on all of our economic development projects.
I like what you're doing.
Thank you.
I guess-
I'm certainly in favor of moving-
Yeah, that's what it was, my next question is, do we just need a consensus?
Well, yeah, I think what Amanda is asking for is, is your agreement to send our thanks to our current committee and let them know that a new committee will be formed by BEP. And it, I don't, there might be some duplication, I'm not really sure. Yeah, I guess that's BEP's decision as to who you ask, but I, then I would communicate with our current committee and, again, thank them for their service, but let them know we're going to transition to a new, a new committee.
Mr. Chair? If we had somebody that we would want to recommend to it, could, would you guys look at those individuals?
Absolutely.
Okay. So the consensus is that we should establish some kind of an agreement with BEP, then?
Mm-hmm.
Sure, I think we definitely need that, right? So Amanda and I-
Everybody in agreement on that?
I'll move approval of, of turning these, turning this committee over to the BEP.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's motion been made and seconded, any further discussion? Beth, do you have any discussion on that?
Hmm, no.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, so nothing would be really turned over until Michelle has drafted up a-
Correct.
A final contract.
We'll get, we'll get right on that, yeah.
So, motion's been made and seconded to move forward with turning the loan program over to BEP. You want to do a roll call, Vicki?
Commissioner Shlangen?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinen?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried on a five-minute roll.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Thanks, Amanda.
I have it.
No, this is for you.
Oh, that's for me, okay. Do you want me to wait, or do you want me to grab?
Well, yeah, we're going to be in a closed session here in a little bit.
You better grab it now.
You better go. Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, would you consider a five-minute recess here before we go on?
Well, recess for five minutes before we conduct our-
Thank you.
Close meeting.
Commissioner Shlangen, we're going to go into closed session, so you'll need to switch to that other link that I had sent you for the closed session, because I'm, I'm going to close out this, this version of go-to meeting, and then we're going to switch over to the other one that I have emailed to you, so, thank you.
I think that's what she was going to do, but I think she came too late.
That's fine, she can-
But, yeah, she's-
Okay.
Well, I was going to five-minute of it.
Can you get in there?
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
You know, those are pretty new homes. One was at Wildwood Senior Assistance Facility, another one was-
What's that?
Those still probably have, oh gosh, between 10 and 15 years before they're paid off.
Yeah, we're going to-
Because they're pretty new.
Especially Wildwood, that's like maybe three years old. Yeah.
I'm going to sit here, and I'm going to sit there, and then the last one, sure I was going to work.
Kind of, so, while we may be sitting here, yeah, I'm still there for two more.
I was, I was-
You'll see, you'll see some more.